Let's give it up for the football team, the cheerleaders, and the marching band. Now I know we just clapped, but I do believe we can do a little bit better as we cheer on our students on the amazing accomplishments and the opportunities that they've had over this whole season. So let's try it one more time. Come on Warriors, give it up for our For those of you who don't know me, my name's Aaron Martin. I'm the high school principal here at Wynton Woods City Schools, and I am extremely excited to be before you as we celebrate our young people on this amazing run to the state championship. Through this process, we've been fortunate enough to have an amazing marching band to help root us on all throughout this whole season. We've been fortunate enough to have a stellar cheerleading squad to root the team on in victory, and we also have been fortunate enough to have an unbelievable football team. For those of you who know me, when I get a microphone, I can go on for days and days and days, but at this point, I'm going to help share the spotlight and have a few words from our athletic director, Mr. David Lumpkin, then we're going to move on to Coach Murphy.
And I promise you, I will be very, very brief. I would like to say congratulations, fellas. You persevered over a long season. You were warrior strong. When people doubted you, you were warrior strong. When you were one and two, you believed you were warrior strong. Never quit, never gave up. When you went through and you had to play tougher teams, they talked about you. You persevered. You fought through. Warrior strong. What a way to open up a brand-new school building and have a state championship in the same year. Unbelievable. You will forever, you will forever be remembered for this moment. Enjoy this moment. I now turn it over to Coach Murphy.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Coach Murphy, head football coach here. I've been saying since day one, you know, I'm really blessed, really blessed to not only have the opportunity I have to be the head football coach and a teacher, but to do it here at Wynton Woods is a really, really big deal. You know, this football's meant a lot to this place for a long, long time. I've told these guys since day one, you know, this job was never about me. It was about this place and these young men and these cheerleaders in the band and continue to make this this place what it's what it's been for so, so long. Truly blessed, truly thankful, just from the school board to Mr. Smith, Mr. Martin, Mr. Lumpkin for giving me the opportunity. Couple of these players, you know, they were on the committee, the hiring committee. It's pretty special, you know, obviously winning, winning a lot of football games, winning the state championship is something really, really special. But then when two of the players that are going to be seniors were on that committee responsible for giving me this opportunity, it just makes it that much more special. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my wife back here. She's with me. That's my rock. My parents, mom and dad. I'm still blessed to have a mom and dad around coming to these games. This is my wife, this is Murphy. Just really blessed for this opportunity. I've said it three times. I'm talented up here. Just, it's a special place. I've been around. I've been around. I've been doing this for 21 years. And it's different. You know, people throw those hashtags out all the time, but I don't think they really live them. I think when we throw out hashtags and saying different, this place is different, but it's different because of young men like this and people like we have in this school district and in this community. So really, really thankful, fellas. We talked about chapter 44. These guys can tell you how old I am, and I say it all the time. I gotta remind them. I'm 44 years old. I get cheesy sometimes in some of the things I say, but 44 years old, and I said chapter 44 of my book is just going to be titled Blessed, because that's what I've been this year since being in Wynton Woods. Like my boss has said, you know, they can go on forever. I can too. I just can't thank you enough for this opportunity first and foremost, and I'm not going to take a day of this for granted. Not going to take a day of this for granted. I appreciate all you guys doing, and like I said, blessed to be here. Thank you.
Hey, at this time, and this was not on my script, but I think it's appropriate for one of our senior leaders to come up and say a few words. He's been with us all four years. Seven Blue, he's going to come and say a few words on behalf of the football
It was, it was pretty tough at the start of the season, because not a lot of people, we didn't have a lot of support at the beginning of the season. It was only our team behind our back and whoever else was with us. Then we moved. So we started the season out of one and two. Everybody calling us trash, saying just very disrespectful things. Then we got to four and three. People still doubted us. After four and three, nine and, nine and whatever, more people started joining the, joining the winning team. Now we here. I'll pick up the people that's, you feel me? Deciding to join is just now, but I mean, I'm staying with the people that was here in front of the beginning. I'm blessed.
Okay. We're also going to hear from our superintendent as well, but there's a couple of things I want to say before he comes and takes over the mic. So one of the things that Coach Murphy talked about, he talked about having the opportunity to have two of our young people on the hiring committee as we vetted and interviewed countless of people who wanted to be the coach of Wynton Woods City Schools. One of the things that's directly connected to how we teach is student choice and student voice. So it was extremely important to us to tie those two together when it came down to selecting our next leader of the high school football team. So our kids have voice and our kids have choice, and it's directly connected to how we teach in our project-based learning approach. So I'm super excited about that. Super excited about our team. And without further ado, our fearless leader, Mr. Anthony G. Smith.
First thing I'd like to do, where's Tyree? Come on. I went through a lot of different pictures and had a lot of different conversations, and I just want to prove to the public, I am taller than this guy. And I'm faster, and I'm faster too. Would anybody like to see that? This has been an amazing opportunity, and when we were talking, when Coach Murphy mentioned about young people getting a chance to choose the next leader, you have to trust the young people to do it. And we trusted them. They made a great choice. We appreciate you, sir. We appreciate you taking the young men as far, as far as they could possibly go. They can't go any further until next year. And the Hoben president wrote me an incredible letter. He says, not only are they winners, but the character of the team is absolutely amazing. So I met with the school board and had a conversation. And Dr. Johnson, stand up, Dr. Johnson. Okay, there's Dr. Johnson, school board president. There's Mr. Burdy, vice president. Mr. McGowan. And Paula Coon. Mr. McGowan, I don't know if you know much about him, but he is also the head baseball coach at Purcell area. And I know you guys are just like, they didn't make, no, well, it's okay. Yeah, they didn't make it. But it's all right. It's all right, Coach, because you know we love you anyway. Maybe, maybe we'll play Purcell next time. But I'm going to do something that I've never done before, and I'm excited about it. The board gave me permission to do it. Next week, no school. School is closed. All, all week. No school. No school. Don't try to come. Don't try to show up. School is canceled for two weeks because you guys are champions. And I'd like to end with, thank you Warriors. We love you and stay strong. Thank you, guys. Amazing team.
Good evening. It's 6:30 PM on Monday, December the 13th, 2021, and an now call the Wynton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dan?
Present.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Present.
Mr. McGowan?
Present.
Mr. Burdy?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes. Mr. Denny, would you, would you come up? Because I know Megan's not here tonight. And they actually, at OSBA, they, they came and they said that they were just so excited about opportunities for young people, and they wanted to do something special for the community that they had never done. And so they contributed $1,900 in Thanksgiving dinner items, and this was a very generous donation from Megan. They don't have to. They do it because they, they're part of who we are. They're in Forest Park. And I don't know if we, if you guys remember from last meeting, last month's meeting, they decided to stay in Forest Park and actually expand their operation. So that was a really good piece. So Mr. Denny usually has the contact with him, so he'll be accepting the, the recognition from our board to Megan because he's usually living with them on a regular basis. All right?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Smith. We, we do spend a lot of quality time together, and they're the kind of firm you want as a partner. Many of you know the leadership there. You know Evans and Kathy Nwankwo and their family, and it's, it's very much like a family, and they treat us as part of that. And so we, as you might expect, they rallied around some of our families during the Thanksgiving season to help provide some, some meals for some families that could use them. So it was really a touching gesture and generous, and it's just the way they do business. And so we're, we're proud to call them a partner. And we're, you know, sitting in a room right now that was constructed in large part by them. So it's, it's, it's great to have them, and we appreciate them, and I'd be happy to convey this to Evans and the leadership.
Yeah, he's a big guy, so when he cries on your shoulder, just hold him up.
Right. Oh, yeah. Thank you. She was just adding that, Mrs. Denny was saying that they also volunteered to distribute the meals. So they didn't just provide them and turn them over. They, they helped deliver them to the families as well.
Yeah. So we did some, some simple math, and we did some calculations, and Ms. Wilson's going to help work with Mr. Denny and Mr. Doctor, where we realized that we have the holiday season coming up, but our children will actually miss 22 meals. So we have to put that on our radar to make sure that those meals are very important to the family. So we, we have to figure out another way to get that piece going even though we're on break, because we know that people eat every day. So when we mentioned that to Mr. Doctor and Ms. Wilson took the message, we're going to work expeditiously to make sure that we can take care of our young people over the break, so they come back happy and vibrant and excited about school. All right. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have on our docket to have a recess, but since we're just getting started, you have another one?
We have two more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Doc, you're excited about that recess?
Yes, please, Mr. Smith.
So the next one is the Go Warriors Award, and I would like to thank everybody who supported the young people. I know that Mr. McGowan, you probably went to every game until it started getting cold, and, and I appreciate you for that. But this award, the Go Warriors Award, is congratulations to Wynton Woods School Warriors, football team, and head coach Chad Murphy. They're probably still out there celebrating somewhere, folks, who won, won the division state championship against Archbishop Holman Knights on Thursday, December 2nd in Canton, Ohio, scoring 21-10 victory. We're proud of you and your victory to our, for our school and our district. Go Warriors. Team captains and coach captains, Tariq Spikes, Seven Blue, Ja'ron Gibson, Quentin Jenkins Jr., Kayden Sanders, Will Edwards, Andrew Thompson, along with the offensive coordinator Greg Forrest, and defensive coordinators Carzlin Gray will be present, will be present to represent the team. They're still doing their part, so we just went on with it. But I would like to just extend a hearty welcome and a hand to Megan for your contribution. Thank you, guys, very, very much. We totally appreciate you. And Mr. Denny gave an incredible speech on your behalf. And so what we'd like for you to do is come back, come up and, and add to it. Megan, come on.
Mr. Smith, you want me to, you want to get those?
Everybody get your phones out, because this is going to be like a, see, you see?
So do I, do I talk through the mask?
Yeah, sir, you can do it either way you want, as long as we can hear you.
I like to pull it down.
Just a little. It's okay.
Just a little. Is that all right?
It's okay.
this is a certificate of appreciation that was given to Megan Construction Company by Wynton Woods City Schools and the Board of Education. And I remember when I first got a call to be here tonight, the thing that I said to Mr. Denny was that we are not doing anything to receive any kind of recognition. And he compelled me to be here anyway. And, and I think that, when I think about that, I run a nonprofit called New Way Foundation, and oftentimes, we have our annual events, and we had to honor an individual. So most of the time, these individuals are so humble that they, they didn't want to receive the honor or even come and all the whole thing about show around them. They feel uncomfortable. And I tell them that it's good to not to think that way, because it's really, we're not doing it so we can, everybody can clap and give you accolades. We're doing it because I think it's important not only to be recognized, but also it may be a good lesson for other people who wants to do the same. And so I am very thrilled to receive this certificate of appreciation. And I will tell you that we build a lot of schools, as you well know. We've worked for probably about 20 different school districts, and this is the very first time that we're doing something like this. Well, because I believe that every good deed should start from home, and this is home for us. And, and we are, we enjoy the partnership, and we're not going anywhere. We do that by building our new building to expand so we can be here for hopefully another 25 years. Thank you for the recognition, even though this is not why we're doing it, but there's plenty to come in the future. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, Community Spirit Award? Thank you.
Thank you.
So this, this next award goes to two incredible gentlemen that have served the board extremely well. They've been at all the meetings. They've given a lot of feedback, a lot of conversations, supporting policies, voting on certain items, helping to support the levy. And we wanted to recognize that Dr. John Cupaletti and Mr. Geno McGowan's, this is their last meeting officially on the board, but they told me that I can call on them anytime, and I promise that I will. I appreciate you guys for everything that you've done, every idea that you've brought to the committee and everything that you supported along the way. And it will feel different without you, and that's a good thing, by the way. But we're here, so come to our games, our activities, our events, because you're part of that show. So thank you for everything. So Dr. Johnson?
And I would like to invite Dr. Cupaletti and hoster, Mr. Geno McGowan's, up to the podium to receive an honorary award. And while they're coming, I'd also like to thank Megan Construction for the generous donation of the food. I mean, we really appreciate the partnership, and we don't take it for granted, and we don't take it lightly. So we just want to say thank you again from the board. So we appreciate it. Okay. Well, she's first. This is to you, Mr. McGowan's, for your service, and we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And this is for Dr. Cupaletti, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much. If you are, we're kind of not too close, but open up, okay, so that she can drink and get a picture. Can you get all three of us?
Should you be in the middle?
Should I be in the middle?
The beautiful guy should be in the middle.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. I do want to say that it has been a pleasure serving with these two gentlemen, and they did bring a lot to our board, and we really appreciate their tireless effort in working with us and bringing their thoughts to the board. And, you know, when we get into the meeting, it looks like we agree on everything, but in our work sessions, we kind of battle it out, and that's what you need, because iron sharpens iron. And I really do appreciate working with both of you. So thank you very much.
So Dr. Cupaletti or Mr. McGowan's, this will be your mic, last mic test. So would you like to come up and say a few words? I would appreciate it if you did.
You can come back?
Yes, sir.
You left too soon, I think.
I mean, you have options. You can sing a song, make a speech, whatever, whatever your heart desires.
Oh, you want me to say something?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, kind of bittersweet, as I've told the other people on the board. A lot of things going on, and I just didn't feel like I had the time to devote to the board like it's needed. Some things have changed, so I do have some more time. And as I told you, I'll be around, still attending all the games and supporting Wynton Woods in any way that I possibly can, and supporting the board, the existing board, and also the new board members. So I'm not going anywhere. I'll be around.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I was minding my own business, and Jessica Miranda gave me a call and said, would I talk to her? And I said, sure, I'll talk to anybody. And that was four years ago, and it has been a wonderful experience to work with everybody on the school board, in the district, the teachers. I've had some limitations where I haven't done everything I wanted to do, but I'm still around, and I'll come back and try and make up for what I missed out on. But it really has been a pleasure. I've tried to talk to everyone I could to thank them individually. I haven't thanked you yet, but...
Thank you.
Okay. And so, and anyone else I missed, I'm sorry. I missed you. But it has been an outstanding pleasure, and I'm really pleased with the makeup of the board. They're going to support the initiatives of the superintendent and keep this district running like a fine-tuned watch. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, I think we would have gone into recess, but I'm still pretty fresh. Everybody pretty fresh? Okay, we don't need to recess. All right, I'm going to move on. If we need to, we will circle back to that. So the next item on the agenda is 4.01, which is public comments. And I do have one public comment. Mr. Bill Spielman, you may take the podium, please.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to wish you all Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I spoke in September, October. I missed last month. You guys changed it to the third week instead of the fourth week, so I apologize for missing that. In, in September, I came and talked to you about math and reading proficiency scores in the high school level based on grades in 2019, as published by the Public School Review website for Wynton Woods, and that wasn't misleading information as, as I heard. I had three goals in that September talk. The first one was to make you aware of these scores, if you weren't. Number two was to find out why we had the huge drop in 2015, 16 in math and reading proficiency in both, in both those areas. And three, to ask to form a task force to address this concern. I've had two of those three met, because last month, there was a presentation about scores and, from three different people, and I also heard in that meeting that you're going to start up a committee in January to bring up some of those questions and concerns. So that last month, three staff members included, including Dr. Adrian Martin, presented statistics that show how well students are performing. The numbers were presented as how well the students perform against a threshold, and that's a quote. There were 4,008 students in Wynton Woods District as of last month. In math, in the third grade, we scored 25.3. We upgraded that in the fourth grade to 37.1, but the fifth grade, we were down to 20. The sixth grade, 16.3. The seventh grade, 6.5. The eighth grade, up again, 22.5. Ninth grade, 26.2, and then 10th grade, 9.3. The comment was made, and I forget the score. I, I went back to the presentation and took some pictures, but I missed the number on geometry. It was talked about how that was a weakness in the high school, but there were other, other things that were doing better. I do understand the significance of that, of these scores, and that I'm eight, and that's why I'm here. There's a tradium, trading axiom, the trend is your friend. Write it. This is not a trend to be written. The question was asked at that, at that last meeting, when students are succeeding, not succeeding, what is the action? And it was additional support and then special plans to get more support. I don't think it's working real well. But there's some good things, too. I mean, in, in eighth to 10th grade, reading scores doubled. In the fourth to fifth grade, reading went from 28 to 46.
Just a few more.
Is that my time?
That's your time. Just finish your thought. Finish your thought.
So I'm going around to churches and community groups trying to get them here. One of these months... One of these months, this room is going to be packed with concerned parents. One day, may our reading, math, and general education progress be as strong and successful as our championship football program.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman.
You've got my number ready?
Yes, sir. I do.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is the Witten Woods Teachers Association representative. Do we have a representative here tonight from the Witten Woods Teachers Association? Okay, since we don't, we will move on to 5.02, which is the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, OPC. Do we have a representative from OPC tonight? Yes, please, you can take the podium. Thank you.
Yay!
Sorry, guys, if my voice is a little raspy. I'm seventh grade cheer coach, so we had a game today. So I am doing this on behalf of our president, Shonda Gordon. She couldn't be with us tonight, so she sent me in her place. She just wanted to make sure that OPC and all of our members let both our cheer team, our football team, our fly corps and band know that we were proud of them for the state championship win, and to have a wonderful and safe holiday. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
All right, thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kinn?
I'll abstain.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes with four to one abstention. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the financial statements for November 2021. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, for the month of November, the total general fund revenues... Am I out of time?
He's still, no.
Your time is running.
I'm still ringing for the other day, sorry about that.
Was 21.2 million. Month-to-date revenues was 2.1 million, which was mostly from our state of Ohio. Our year-to-date expenditures in the general fund were at 20.5 million, which is approximately 2.1 million under budget for, for this timeframe, or we're running approximately 4% under budget. We had total unencumbered funds of approximately 30.1 million, 17.8 million of the general fund, and we still have 6.7 million remaining in our building funds. That's basically a summary of the November report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of November 2021 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation for Investments for November 2021. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, for the month of November, the district had approximately $30 million invested, of which we earned $8,983. And most of that was for the general fund, the amount of $8,370, and building funds of only $610.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order to approve the investment report as presented?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, which is the resolution determining to proceed to levy an additional tax for current operating expenses in excess of the 10-mill limitation. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, as you know, last board meeting, you voted to pass a resolution of necessity, which means you needed a levy, a five-year, $3-million emergency levy. And at that time, when you pass that resolution, that goes down to the Hamilton County Auditor, and in return, he certifies back to us what millage will generate $3 million annually. And the Hamilton County Auditor, Dusty Rhodes, who I've worked a long time with, as you know, is not coming back. So I was glad to get his help on this, because they did try to turn this around quickly for us so we could get it back to the December meeting. And they certified back 5.4 mils. And that is approximately $189 a month on a $100,000 home.
Not a month.
How much?
$18.
Huh?
You said $189 a month?
I mean, a year. My apologies, my apologies.
You have a heart attack.
A year.
Just making sure we're paying attention.
500, 189 annually on a $100,000 home.
Yes, annually, for the whole year.
And if you recall back when we were asking for the 6.95, that's approximately $55 less annually on a $100,000 home. Because our value has gone from 469 million up to 556 million. So our hope is that after passage of the emergency levy, we can see if the state, new state funding will proceed as projected, and at that time, we can determine if we need to renew or let the levy expire. But as you know, we haven't had any additional revenues from real estate since 2009. And we, the district, no matter how gruful they are, they, you cannot continue to go on the same income. And as you know, resi, real estate taxes unfortunately are what fund a majority of the school system. So with that in mind, I'm asking you to pass the resolution to proceed, which will be filed with the Hamilton County Board of Elections.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order, and then we can have any discussion that we would like.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution determining to proceed to levy an additional tax for the current operating expenses in excess, in excess of the 10-mill limitation as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? I'll just make one point of clarification, is that it's about $15.75 a month, you know, so that people will know that that's, you know, dinner out.
$50 cents a day.
Yes, right, a cup of coffee a day or something.
And also the importance of how the district's managed our funds effectively over that long, more than a decade, since there's been any increase. And even with that, as Mr. Seymour presented, the district still has to ask our community, based on the way that the system is set up in Ohio, and hopefully, in the next few years, that can be remedied. So this is, you know, like a little bit of a, a reprieve for five years. It's not forever, I want our community to know, and we've reviewed what they have to say, and there's a reduction to give some relief both ways, but we, we need the support of our community. I'm glad we have members of our community come here, because then they can hear those things. So I hope he is able to bring more people than they can listen to these important facts so that we can pass a levy, and we can work together to accomplish those common goals. So for those people at home that are listening, this is an important issue, and I appreciate the support of our community.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the report, reports of the superintendent, or school reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. I'm going to just bring up a couple of December events. December is fading quickly, but Tuesday, December 14th, is the Witten Woods Middle Schools' Winter Choir Concert, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the North Campus. Wednesday, December 15th, is the Witten Woods Intermediate School Orchestra Winter Concert at the South Campus. And Thursday, December 16th, is the Witten Woods Middle Schools Band Orchestra Winter Concert, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Auditorium of the North Campus. I know that before you guys, I mean, these are not, these are just information only, but one of the things that Ms. Kinn mentioned is about supporting students' initiatives with, with levies. I mean, they have to be part of what we do and how we do it. Without levies, these activities don't happen. You, you cannot ask for people to put more time in, and more kids being involved, and not be able to contribute funding. So when they talk about the state football team, and the incredible band, and the great cheerleaders in Color Guard, that costs something. In order to put those kids on the field, in order to have the right attire, to make sure that they represent us well, the public needs to understand that it's not free. And the other part is, winning a championship is very expensive. It is not free. So we like the glory and all the accolades to go with it, but now we have to support it. And the gentleman said, "Hey, make it a quality program, not just one thing." But I think that's part of our goal, to make everything the one thing, the main thing, and that's what we do. So when we start talking about these activities that are happening, and the people see all their young people in the concerts and having activities and enjoying the festivities, that costs something, so.
Well, and you brought up the, the principal at the rival school that we, that competed in the state, and how he characterized our young, our players.
Absolutely.
And he talked about their character and how they conducted themselves. So it's being on the field, playing very well, but also conducting yourself in private life and, and doing the right thing, that character asks you to do.
Totally agree.
So I thought that was important that you brought up in the, in the celebration, thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing, I just want to add one thing, Mr. Smith, to that, is that with our student athletes, the football team, that when we went to the state capitol, Mrs. Miranda was able to read off a list of, I don't know, 20, 30 names for our team, that they have a GPA of 3.5 or higher, and that is commendable. That is commendable, because the state only requires a 1.0. And so if you set the bar, they will reach for it. And I do believe that success breeds success. People want to be around something that's successful, that's just human nature. So, you know, we need the programs that we have, we need the arts, we need the other programs as well. But when the students see that there are, there's praise and there's accolades, and they, success breeds success. So it, it's coming, it's here, it's here. I'm not even saying it's coming, it's here. So, you know, I just wanted to add that, that we, they participate in these activities, but they also are students getting good grades, because we set that standard.
Very good.
So, go ahead. Let's see, so next item, are you finished, or you got, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Cupaletti.
I'm wondering whether we could sponsor a essay contest from our students on exactly the points you've been discussing, how it's important to them, in time for the levy.
Very good.
And if so, I'd be willing to provide an award, financial award, to one or two or three winners.
Very good.
Would that be something that you could look into?
Totally, totally agree with you. I think it would be a grand idea.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Because we've been promoting levies and having conversations, but we've been doing something far longer than that, where we talk about student voices. And students have a very, very strong voice in the district, and that might be a good chance to showcase their voice.
So I make an offer to provide a financial incentive.
Okay.
If you'll provide the program for the students to explain why it's important.
Consider it done. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, I love the idea.
Yeah. So I have Dr. Martin and Dr. Raglin both agreeing that, hey, this might be a really nice way to go. So, hey, consider it, already moving in that direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cupaletti. Mr. Smith, the next item on the agenda is yours as well, 10.02, which is the first reads for the revised board policies.
Yes, Board, and President, these are all first reads. And the reason I call these out, because I want the public to know what policies we're talking about from time to time, and not just have it silent through our own work. So Policy 7450 is property inventory. Policy 8330 is student records, and I'm going to come back again to student records in a minute. Policy 8400 is student, school safety. Policy 8462, student abuse and neglect. Policy 8600, transportation. Policy 8651, non-routine use of school buses. And Policy 8740, operations and bonding. Going back to Policy 8330, State Representative Catherine Ingram has proposed a, to the House and to the Senate, that student records have become a problem. And she believes that schools should be able to get student records to the next school within five days. There are some people in opposition to that. And it's people in opposition to it where young people owe tuition to the school. And they're saying that they're going to hold transcripts and hold grades, but those students still come to us. And we have to make sure that when we take the kids, we, we have to take them, because they live in our community, but records are delayed, and in some cases, we don't know what grade the student is in, or what kind of scores they have, or what kind of support they need. And it's been strange, but in some cases, Board, records have taken several months to get to our district. And you're still working with the kids to get them through, to help them understand about the compelling interest that we have about education, but records are being delayed for months. So I support her, her, her position, I support her standards, I support the goal. She was a board member in Cincinnati Public for many years. It can happen, five days is not unreasonable. But because on the other side of the coin, we're trying to put programs and academic programs together for young people, and we don't even know where they stand academically. So we'll see how that one works out, but we definitely support it.
And, and, and I've ran across a situation like that also, and it's ridiculous that it takes months or weeks to get a, get a child's records. Ran across the same situation when a, a, a young man was transferring into Priscilla Marion from another school, and in talking to the, the district admin people, they knew the school district would take a long time. They knew the school district that you would call them and not get a call back, for whatever reason. And some of it might have to be with funding, that they don't want to lose that kid. But if, if a child decides to transfer into Witten Woods, or transfer out of Witten Woods, it behooves us to go ahead and, and do that. So five days is not unreasonable, and I think the Board should absolutely support this measure.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's even been times where we knew that our information was slow in coming, and a young person was transferring to another district out of Witten Woods. We actually had couriers take those records to the school. We didn't even rely on the mail. We had, because we wanted the young people to be able to keep moving forward academically. So that just kind of is a testament about what we believe about students. They don't have to be ours, they are, they're, they're, they're someones.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. McGowan. Board, there are seven policies that we need to look at and be prepared to vote on at the next meeting, the next regular board meeting. Okay. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is the facilities update. Mr. Denny or Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Mr. D.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you, Dr. Johnson. Good evening again, Board.
Good evening. Good evening.
So Mr. Smith, for this facilities update this month, asked me to move away from the main campuses, or the North and South Campus, where we've been spending the majority of our time over the last two years, and focus a little bit more tonight on the former intermediate school, the future home of the Early Childhood Center, Early Childhood Central Campus and Central Office. So we have been working on this for quite some time, actually, to develop at least a timeline. And I, just a caveat, I'm not thrilled with the timeline in terms of the things we could encounter. As you all know, supply chain is... As you all know, supply chain issues are rampant at this time. Everything from tires for buses to paint to furniture, it just, just, we encountered in our personal lives too. So it's just, we're going to throw out some timeframes tonight and actually have a handout for you as well. But we'll just see how this goes. We need to have a target. We need to have a goal. We need to have a plan. We need to have a roadmap to get there. But knowing that, this is at best an estimate, but we're going to be as aggressive as we can in achieving this. So I'll go ahead and pass these to. If you'd like to just pass them down, you can, thank you, Mr. Smith. And you can follow along once you receive this. But again, this is the future Early Childhood Central Campus, and this is an abatement and renovation timeline. And I want to stress this because I think this is really important as well. We, Mr. Smith and I have had a lot of discussion about this and I know he thinks, he considers this to be very important as well. This is, this is part of the facility master plan for the district. So there's, architect is already selected. It's not an extra cost for that. This abatement is actually covered under the bond. So the abatement that you see in here, this is paid half by the state and half by the bond. This is not impacting general fund when we look at the abatement costs. The renovation costs are largely, largely to a very large tune, being deferred by ESAR funds, federal dollars, that allow us to push those into the building. So this is a very taxpayer-friendly forward plan. I just want to make sure I stress that. So the goal is to complete renovation and abatement by June 1st of 2023. You can, you can see that at the top. So as I said, the design firm S H P has been selected. They were selected as a part of our facility master planning process back in 2012. And that's continued all the way through. The facility master plan is a complete plan for the district's facilities, not to be confused with the land, land use plan. That purview resides with Mr. Smith and the Board. Funding ESAR, as I touched on, also previously funded through the bond and state matching funds at 49 cents on every dollar. So almost half is funded by the state for the abatement. Hazardous material surveys completed. We did solicit for bids. So that's forthcoming later in the meeting this evening where we'll look at the slate of bidders and who, what the lowest, most effective bid was. We held a public auction that just recently expired and the pickup was this past weekend. So attempting to generate more revenue by selling any surplus equipment supplies that we can. And then the abatement is scheduled to begin January 5th and proceed through the month of February. We're, we're hoping to go out for bids for the HVAC renovations, which are ESAR funded in mid-February and then hoping to start on those in April and finish those by August. It's pretty aggressive timeline, assuming things fall in line, labor is abundant, and we, we think this is reasonable and doable. Provided supply chain holds up for us as well and we can get the parts, materials and equipment we need. Bidding for the building renovation would be next, this coming June of '22. And then we would hope to embark on the actual renovation. We would hold engagement. There would be meetings with staff and affected stakeholders on this, just like as we did when we designed our buildings, but more truncated version of that. And then we'd go to renovation of the building September, hopefully through June, with an anticipated goal of opening the June, or excuse me, the August, for August timeframe for the '23, '24 school year. So that'd be August 21st, 2023. So this is a roadmap and it's, like I said, it's an aggressive timeframe, but we think it's doable. But it's going to, we're going to need dominos to fall for us. So I appreciate the opportunity to share this with you. And Mr. Smith, I turn it back over to you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, one, one of the things that, when this, when this building was being designed, it, there was a lot of promise and a lot of ideas and a lot of expectations. And what, and I know you guys know because you were here earlier, there are two basketball games going on right now that you cannot hear. There is a strength and conditioning program going on right now that you cannot hear. So the acoustics and all of those designs that we talked about are actually coming to terms where we can actually have a board meeting where there are other activities. And I know the principals of the middle school and the high school are excited because what they wanted this to look like was just a swinging the doors off the hinge, just having as many activities as you can, but still being able to conduct business. So it actually worked like we said. So.
Yes, sir.
Swimming pool, people are in the pool and that's going very well. So all these things are just going great. But I've been in buildings before that you can hear all the activities.
Oh, yeah.
Here, you cannot hear any of the activities going on, which is a testament to all the work and the leadership that you put in place. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. We have one question, Mr. Smith.
So the second bullet point is funding. There's no numbers, of course, that's okay. But this will largely be paid for by ESAR funds and state funding. Is that correct?
A, a very good chunk of it, yes.
We don't know yet because we don't have the bid.
It's about 3 million in ESAR funds. We don't have the final bid, so it's not yet.
But it's largely expected to be not very expensive.
Yes.
And, and the end, we will have a building to move into.
Correct.
That won't be very expensive.
Yeah. Yes. As, we're, we're basically keeping the best building we had by all assessments that were done by engineers and architects, and that's the, the former intermediate school, had the best bones. So of all the buildings we've, we've been able to maintain and operate over the years, this was, had the most promise. It's a single story. It's got about 45 classrooms. It's 80,000 square feet. It's a former middle school. It's a good site.
Which school is it exactly?
Waycross, 825 Waycross Road.
825 Waycross.
It's a former Waycross Elementary or Forest Park Middle way back in the day.
Right. At 825 Waycross, we now have what kind of classes?
None at the moment.
What are we anticipating?
Uh, preschool and kindergarten.
Okay. So we may actually benefit if the Build Back Better Plan gets passed in the Senate in ways that we can't even imagine, right?
Absolutely.
So we're really ahead of the curve here. And so thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. Yep. It's, thanks to all of you too. I mean, it's, it's a group effort for sure, but it's, we're positioned well. The timing could not be better for this right now. Also, supply chain problems and labor shortages aside, from a funding standpoint, this is a, a windfall for the district, potentially.
I, I remember the day that we visited Forest View and I, I know that the Board was very anxious about let's keep our buildings and let's keep our buildings and let's keep our buildings. And I think you guys still had that same charge. You said, yeah, let's keep our buildings, but not this one.
Not that one.
And any other ones that look like that. I do want to say, I, I've had some people make a comment to me about, oh, what do you need a preschool village? Because anything worth building builds a strong foundation. And, and we will see that. I mean, we will see that foundation come into play when those kids are sitting there and learning all day and as they go through our, you know, through our school year. So I'm excited about a preschool village. I'm excited about this whole layout. And if we have to wait another year for it, then, you know, so be it. It's, it's going to be worth it.
And I'm excited too, as the gentleman talked about the importance of, of the future, you know, with mathematics and spelling and reading. I think you have to start very young to get that foundation in. And I think this is a great step that would accomplish those common goals. So I'm glad that the community prizes that and we have, we have a, a means to accomplish that. So that's real exciting. Plus I envision that there's so many, I don't want to curse, there'd be so many children where like, we need to grow. But I really think that it will attract people to want to live here in this community. It will attract young families. And we already have a five-star program already from a preschool. So there's so many pluses that I'm really excited about our, our future on this project. Thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Um, and, and one thing I want to, I want to thank you so much because you've, in all your reports, you kind of kept us informed all the way going. And one thing I'm going to miss is your little cute graphs in the pictures.
Handsome graphs, sure. Handsome graphs. They weren't cute.
He can go to the website and still see some of them.
Matter of fact, I think I'll tune in. I think I'll tune in on Waycross to watch it as a building because it was, it was amazing to me to see the beginning of these buildings and getting a chance to tour them and stuff like that. But you do an excellent job of keeping us informed and keeping the public informed every step of the way. And this is just another testament to what you do. So I want to thank you, Mr. Denny.
Thanks, Mr. McGowan. That means, means a lot. But yeah, appreciate the opportunity.
There were, there were other communities and other school districts building buildings all the time while we, we were doing ours and design. And one of the things that during our weekly meetings, Mr. Denny and I kept emphasizing, people don't want to hear about it at the end. And you're going to get bashed if you wait until the end to let people know about the outcomes of the building. So the month-to-month thing was very, very planned. It was very specific. It was a strategy in mind so that no one could say they didn't know. They all knew. And it was televised and we ran it as a monthly opportunity. So this new opportunity is going to be treated the same way. So.
And, and, and the big part to me was there were months you came in with bad news. And you were saying, this isn't, you know, we're not where we need to be. But for the most part, I know I was brand new and you came in almost every month saying, we're under budget.
Yes.
We're under budget, you know, which is, which is key when you're talking about stakeholders' money. So that's, that was important.
Bravo.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is personnel schedules. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Ms. Wilson.
Good evening. Before you, you have schedules A, C, G, and E for your approval. And A is resignation. C is classified staff. D is supplementals. And E are leaves. And I respectfully request that you approve the schedules as presented. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote? Thank you so much, Mrs. Wilson.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Dr. Kupalati?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.02, which is the second reads of new and revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. The first one is 5464, which is early high school graduation. 5200 is students as well attendance. 5350, student mental health and suicide prevention. 5516, student hazing. 5630.01, positive behavior intervention and supports and limited use of restraints and seclusion. And 6114, cost principal spending federal funds. After the Board has this opportunity to have conversations, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Bray for 5350, where she talks about some of the things that we put in place for students' mental health and suicide prevention. She wasn't originally going to speak, but she knows it like the back of her hand. So I'm sure she wouldn't mind coming, talking about, a little about some of the initiatives we have in place to kind of take this off the radar, especially with COVID and some of these other related things that we have very little control over.
Do we need a motion or anything?
Oh, let's make the motion and then we'll have her speak. Okay. Was there one more? Did you say 7300 property and disposition of real property?
Did I forget that one?
Yeah, I didn't hear that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's the, the last one. There are total seven policies. So Board, a motion would be in order and then we'll have her present and then we'll have a discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read, new and revised board policies as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now, if we could have Mrs. Bray do her presentation and we can ask questions as, if we have any. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just here to share some information regarding resources that we have available for our students and staff in regards to mental health services, especially due to COVID and the effects that COVID had on our population in, in the buildings. First, we have Talbot House. So Talbot House is a resource that we've been using for years in our district. We have school-based therapists, full-time in every building, at every grade band. For example, we have a full-time, school-based therapist for grades one through three grade band, four through six grade band, middle school, high school, and even the young babies. We have full-time therapists. Also, this year that's new, we have a behavioral specialist, and that is also from Talbot House. That person is here five days a week. That person is a prevention provider. So she does not actually have clients, but what she does is she goes into classrooms, she conducts small groups, and she helps to prevent behaviors that may occur. She may see some things that, that may be triggers for some kids in some groups. And so she provides those services on a prevention provider basis. And we also have a BCBA. So a BCBA is a board-certified behavior analyst. And so we have that person that works in our schools two days a week from Hamilton County E S C. And she works with the building administrators and the teachers to focus on those tier three, the most severe behaviors in our buildings. And so what she does, she goes around and there's a referral process. That process is, it starts with the building administrator and then it goes to the teacher or the classroom. And so the BCBA, she observes classrooms. She observes students. She makes recommendations. She helps with strategies. That person also helps with our PBIS plan. You name it, they do it. So we have approximately almost 10 different individuals that are here on a daily basis to assist our staff and students with mental health services. And they, they don't just provide services during the school day. They provide services during winter break, summer break, spring break, weekends. So they're here for our kids.
One thing that Ms. Bray did several weeks ago, and we're going to do it as a, a regular meeting, she brought all the mental health therapists and professionals together so we could have a conversation. And there were principals there and, and it was a really good meeting simply because we were trying to figure out what are the things that are creating the most, most of the issues, not just at Wynton Woods, but across the country. And the mental health therapists and the providers that were there were absolutely incredible professionals. And they talked about the recurring things that are happening all across the state of Ohio, where I hear superintendent meetings where they're saying, we don't know how to deal with this part. And I appreciate Ms. Bray for bringing that group together to have the conversation. And it wasn't just a one-time deal. It's going to be ongoing so we can figure out how do we really get rid of some of these, this turmoil that young people are having? Because they're going through so many different things as it relates to how to become successful in school, when that's not your main objective. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and they also do trauma-informed practices and trauma-informed care because so many of our kids and staff were affected by COVID. They may have lost some loved ones. So they make recommendations for other services outside of here that, like Fernside, that, you know, they can also do therapy outside of school, you know, because they were affected. So they have been working tirelessly. They work through the summer as well. Their clientele, client base continues to improve or increase over time. We don't like to see that, but because of the circumstances that we're in, we need to see that.
It's better to be diagnosed and get some help than to get lost in the shuffle and fall through the cracks.
Correct. Correct. Yes.
And anyone who's ever done therapeutic intervention with young people, it's not one and done. It's one in many, 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 many sessions to kind of get them through the, the rough parts. And then eventually they become acclimated with you and, and they grow through a different opportunity. But we didn't want, I wanted the Board to know But we didn't want, I wanted the Board to know what things we have in place. As you may be hearing from parents about, hey, my child is struggling, what are they doing? Here's some of the very, very important things that we are doing.
Yeah. Very good.
Are parents able to reach out to you as well, or is that, is there a hotline or anything that is available to students or families?
Yes. So we do have the information located on our website. And then also the buildings are aware, the mental health services and therapists, they have informational sessions, but the information is out there. So I'm glad that I was able to present today because if there are people that are interested, they have families or children that attend here, they know that we have those resources available. And they, they are here to stay, which is a fortunate thing for all of our students and staff. So they're not just here for our students, they're here for our staff as well because we were all affected.
Yes.
So did you hear, you did hear her say she was thrilled to present today? So I just wanted to say, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Smith.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Board, are there any other questions or concerns that you would like to talk about at this time? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cucculetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.03, which is the revised board policies, policy 1617, policy 3217, and policy 4217 regarding weapons. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yeah, this was kind of, kind of charged by Dr. Cucculetti, who was concerned about weaponry in, in buildings and props and those kinds of things. And I think Ms. Wilson worked on it as quickly as she possibly could that night after the Board meeting to get it ready and revised. So Ms. Wilson, would you like to come up and talk a little bit about the policy 1617, weapons, or 3217, or 4217? Weapons.
Yes. So as, as you recall, and for those that weren't here, Dr. Cucculetti raised a concern after the Baldwin, was it Alec Baldwin incident, where he had a prop gun during a rehearsal that actually ended up killing someone on the set. And so Dr. Cucculetti read this policy and said, you know, hey, I'm noticing that there's a, a reference to the use of look-alike guns in, in schools. And he wanted to make sure that our policy addressed any potential for prop guns to, you know, be used inappropriately and inadvertently or accidentally hurt someone. So he suggested some language, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I have it in front of me. I'm quite satisfied with it.
Okay. And so that language, he, we, he addressed, you'll see it, it appears in red, and I can't see anymore, my readers on. And we add it, sorry. Non-operational, if you look on the second page, under G. So it allows for theatrical props used in appropriate settings, but they have to be non-operational. So we would never allow like a real operational gun to be used in one of our plays, for example. We just wanted to make that clear. So do you have any questions?
No, I'd like to comment that I've read the three, and I'm satisfied that it protects the district and everybody in the building. So thank you.
Yes. No, thank you. That was a nice addition, and I think it also, from a liability standpoint, I think we've done our due diligence.
Right. Thank you. Board, a motion would be in order to pass these three board policies as presented.
I'll make a motion to pass, to approve the revised policies, 1617, 3217, and 4217 weapons as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any other questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cucculetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.04, which is the bid for former Wynton Woods Intermediate School abatement. And Mr. Smith, we're going to go back to you for that.
Mr. Denny.
Thanks again, Mr. Smith and Dr. Johnson. Good evening again, everyone. So Board, you should have before you two documents related to the public bids that were solicited by the district for the abatement of the former Wynton Woods Intermediate School located at 825 Waycross Road. And the first document should be essentially a bid tabulation showing that there were three firms that were qualified, submitted bids, and were bonded. And of those three, the firm, the firm O'Rourke Wrecking was the lowest, most responsible bidder. That bidder was vetted by SHP, our architect and design firm. And the bid estimate for this project was at $200,000, and the bid amount actually came in at 122,600. So everyone involved was very pleased, especially given the volatile market conditions, that we're able to get a bid of that, that value for the district. O'Rourke, incidentally, is the firm that completed the Cameron Park demolition back in 2010, and they also completed the Wynton Woods High School and Wynton Woods Middle School demolitions, most recently during this past calendar year. So we're pleased, and we would just request your review and respectfully request your approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, let's get a motion on the floor, and then we can ask any questions if we would have any.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid for the former Wynton Woods Intermediate School abatement as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. So if we have any questions at this time for Mr. Denny, then you can feel free to ask them at this time.
Sure. And on abatement, what all would be entailed with that project?
It's the removal of all the hazardous materials from the building. Yeah.
Yeah, not a little, yeah.
The report is pretty substantial for any building constructed in the late 60s, early 70s, which this building was. The vast majority of the, as they'll refer to it, hot material, the asbestos-containing materials or ACBM, is underneath the floor tiles. That's in the glue. It's not the tiles themselves, and it's, it's the glue or the mastic, as they call it, that they use to secure the tiles to the floor. Back in those days, they put asbestos in that. Also, the, the pucks or the glue behind the chalkboards has asbestos in it. In addition to that, there are pipe chases with pipe elbows and joints and insulation and things of that nature that also contains asbestos. That was largely, it's that, and that'll all be abated from the building. But in addition, air conditioners that are remaining that didn't sell in the auction that have Freon in them, those will also be abated.
Yeah, Ms. Kuhn, anytime you see like a six-inch tile?
Yeah.
Then the glue there is?
That's right, yeah.
It's a problem. From time to time, they come up, and we try to secure that as quickly as possible. So at least they're not, kids are not around that hazardous material. And we've been very, very fortunate to do it very quickly.
Well, I'm glad we're able to kind of deep clean and get rid of all the hazardous materials. It's a good opportunity that we're able to do that now.
Thank you for the question. It's a good question.
Very good.
Well, and in the past, I think whenever one, you just kind of reseal it because you don't want to pull them up.
You can't.
You just got to reseal them, you know, so that it closes it down.
Doc, once they start coming up, it's like a bad dream.
Yeah.
They keep coming up, so you don't want to create that.
So it, it's nice because when that building is done with the things that you have presented earlier, it's going to be like a new building. I mean, the bricks on the outside, the only good thing, it's going to look the same. So, I mean, I'm loving that. I can't wait to see it, so.
Having the pleasure to have Ms. Stiles come to a, a meeting, she's very excited because everybody's new but her.
Yes.
But she's holding, holding things together, and our team is working really, really well knowing that their day is coming.
Right.
And the parents are being very, very patient. Their kids won't be in that building by the time it comes, but keeping kids safe in those environments is absolutely important for us every single day.
Absolutely.
Some of it will have some of the design features that we have in this building, so we're excited.
Oh, yeah.
We probably won't have the learning stairs unless we go right out of the roof.
Yeah, there's no.
That's probably not going to happen, but some of the other amenities are definitely going to be there.
But we do have that little courtyard right there you can do something with.
Absolutely. Because it already has courtyards in it.
Yes, it already has the courtyard in there, so there's something to work with, you know, so.
Absolutely. Very good.
I'm excited.
Thank you.
All right. Board, if there are no other questions for discussion, I'm going to ask Mr. Seymour to call that vote.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cucculetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, which is the legislative report. And I don't have anything particularly, I'm not sure, Mr. Smith, if you have anything that we could report out for the legislative report?
Legislative report's very simple and to the point, Dr. Johnson, the football team was recognized at the state.
Yes, besides that, yes.
In chambers, so, hey.
Go Warriors!
It was great. Some great pictures floating around.
Yeah, right.
And I'd like to just say kudos to Jessica Miranda for arranging that, making it happen. The kids had the whole chamber to themselves, and it was an incredible opportunity.
I thought of something as we were sitting in there. I thought, you know, the kids are moving into a new building, they won the state championship, and they went to the state capitol. There's no way they're going to forget that. That's etched in their brain for life, you know? And, and, and it becomes a part of the history of, of our district now, you know, that, that all happened in the same year. That's delicious to me. I'm sorry. That excites me so much. It really does. I try to contain myself.
So that's going to be my new term. When I like something, I'm going to say, that's delicious.
That's delicious!
Yeah, way to go.
I'm a foodie, what can I say?
Thank you, Doc, for that, your new terminology. I appreciate it.
It is. It's exciting. It really, really is. So, yeah, that, that is really exciting. So, all right, okay. Well, let's move on. The next item is 11.02, which is the Great Oaks Career and Technical Center Report. Mr. Birdy?
I did email some documents out to the Board and Mr. Smith and Mr. Seymour earlier today. We had four Wynton Woods students who were recognized for Scarlet Citizenship Awards. Keith Beasley in the culinary program, Malachi Fryman in the digital arts and design program, Jarrah Longmire in the culinary program, and Corey Dorsey in the dental assistee program. In addition to those documents I sent out to you, there were board highlights from the Board meeting on last Wednesday. Mr. Snyder, the CEO, his report to the Board. There's an Ohio Association of Career Tech superintendents report that goes through some of the economic impacts of what Career Tech does for the state of Ohio, as well as diversity and unity committee reports, legislative reports, and ACTE reports. And then I told you about the spotlight on students. And with that, that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you so much. We do appreciate you taking on that charge because you do very well.
I enjoy it.
Keeping us informed, so we appreciate that. Okay. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is Board motions and recommendations. And Board, we need to set a date for the location of the organizational meeting for 2022. And, you know, we have to do it within the first 15 days of the month. So right now, I'm looking at a date of Monday, January the 10th, 2022. So if we're in agreement with that, I would need to have a motion put in place so that we could meet on Monday, January the 10th, 2022. And we will be meeting in the, at the South Campus in Green Hills at 147 Faragut in Green Hills. So we'll get the room location and all of that posted so that everyone will know exactly where to go.
Do we have to say the time right now?
The, the time, it's going to be at 6:30. Yes, at 6:30. But we need a motion to pin that date, time, and place down.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to set our organizational meeting for Monday, January 10th, 2022, at the South Campus at 6:30 PM.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? We good for the date? Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
No. You're part of the Board. We don't need two abstentions.
No, you can vote for our date. You can agree with us on that, that's fine, yes. If that's what you want to do.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cucculetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. So the next item on the agenda is 12.02, which is to appoint a president pro temp until the president is appointed at the 2022 organizational meeting. So, Board, a motion is in order to approve the appointment of a president pro temp. So.
I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of a president pro temp.
So who would you like to nominate?
Who is president at the moment?
Okay. So you're nominating me?
Dr. Viola Johnson?
I'll second.
So great. Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any others that would like to? No, okay. Mr. Seymour, would you call that vote?
Do you expect there to be more?
Well, that's, I thought maybe somebody would, I thought Jeff would say, yeah, I'm here for it.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cucculetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. I will gladly serve as your president pro temp. Thank you very much. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is 13.01, which is comments from the members of the Board, Superintendent and Treasurer. And if you'd like to go first, Mr. Birdy, I'll take your comments.
Just said it already, congratulations to the football team, Coach Murphy, his staff, you know, it's a, as someone, Mr. Merrill said to me going down the hallway, it's a great day to be a Warrior. That's been said quite a bit, I'm sure. You know, thank you to Jessica Miranda for what she did to get the football team up there to the State House. That was, that was great on her part. And I look forward to the organizational meeting on January 10th.
All right, very good. Thank you. Mrs. Kuhn?
I don't think we can say it enough. Congratulations to our football team and the entire support that they had from the band, the flag team, the cheerleaders, and, and the community, and the staff itself. So I think that goes kudos. I do appreciate their adversity. They overcame, they didn't let, they weren't defined by other people's opinions, they created their own destiny. And I, I, I like those kind of examples, too. It really motivated me, so I appreciated that. But well done. I want to congratulate my colleagues, Dr. Viola Johnson and Jeff Birdy, for your reelection.
Oh, thank you.
And then I also to welcome our new members and congratulate Deborah Denise Bryant and Brandon Smith, who were the top two vote-getters in the last election. And I want to thank my Board members that I've got to work with, Gino McGowan's and also John Cucculetti. Thank you so much for your hard work, your selflessness. I don't think the community realizes the amount of energy that goes in, but also the reward that comes with it. And it's addictive, so stay with it. Apparently, I'm a poster child for the addiction part of it, but, but it's, it's very rewarding. So I do appreciate that. It's, it's, like I said, I don't think people realize the commitment that's involved and the hard work, and that's really, really important. So I think that I wanted to make sure I commented about that. Thank you very much. I also wanted to thank, you know, wish all of our staff and our children, our families a happy, safe holiday, upcoming season. And I do also want our community to know that we're always striving, just through that adversity kind of piece. And I'm glad our community is worried about our academic program as we are, and we want it to get better. And I don't want anybody in our community to ever think that we're ever content or that we're not striving for greater accomplishments reaching every child, that they're not progressing. Each one is moving forward, and they all move at different rates. But I appreciate that dialogue, and I appreciate having our community involved. It beats apathy. And I would like to see more of that, quite honestly, in that engagement. We can come up with great ideas that serve our community and our children. So thank you for that opportunity for people that want to come and express their viewpoints. I think that's important, that we hear them. And to know that we do, it's not an opposition, it's a joint venture, so. But thank you for that opportunity. Night for thank you, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. Next, Mr. McGowan.
As usual, I want to thank the outstanding teachers and the administrators and the community at large. But today, with this being my last meeting, I want to thank the board itself. This has been an absolute pleasure to work with every one of you guys over the time I spent on the board. Mr. Smith, Mr. Seymour, it's been a pleasure working with both of you guys also. And good luck to the new people coming in. And as a longtime resident of Springfield Township, I'll be around cheering at basketball and football games, so. But you board members, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure serving with each and every one of you.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you. Dr. Culetti.
Oh, it's a sad day for me, my last meeting. I do want to make sure that I say how highly I honor the work and dedication of the staff, be it a bus driver, or a teacher, or an administrator, and community members that helped to support this. This is a gem for the area. We're lucky to have it. And I know with the hard work of the people, very high-quality people that are here and those are coming, that will continue to grow. And with respect to the quality, we know that students can graduate from this program, leave this program, and go off to do outstanding things in the military, in higher education, in colleges, in service to the community. So a list of numbers of how we are X percent doesn't highlight the real value that this district has given to the world for many years. And I would like to be able to have a rebuttal when somebody gives me a percentage and explain to them that I know people who went here and who were very successful. And there is always a group of people not letting us lose the ones who have to struggle a little bit more to be successful. And that's really those numbers that we should be thinking about.
Thank you so much, Dr. Culetti. Well said, very well stated. Mr. Seymour.
Unusually, I do have something to say. I asked every, I asked the board to pass a resolution tonight to proceed with a levy, which is for the general fund. I want everybody to understand that the abatement and the remodeling of the IS to be the Early Childhood Center is not being funded with general fund dollars. So I don't want people to think that we're doing major renovations and construction with general operating funds. So the resolution for the levy will not in any way support what's happening over at the intermediate building to convert it to the Early Childhood Center. Mr. Denny and I worked hard to make sure that that's, none of that's been paid, or probably most likely, none of it will be paid from general fund dollars or the new tax levy dollars. Fortunately for us, the Esar funding came at a very good time to support that effort. And everything we're trying to do at that building is supported by Esar funds and recommended, so. And I also would like to thank Dr. Culetti and Mr. McGowan. It's been wonderful working with you. So thanks for your service.
Thank you for clarifying that and saying it again. I think some, we need to state it and restate it, you know, again and again so that people will understand where that money is coming from and so that they don't back up off of the levy that we need.
We've been very fortunate to provide, to fund all, everything as Mr. Denny's phasing it out with Esar funding two, Esar funding three, and it's not using all of our Esar funding for that because people are aware that we got $13 million in Esar funding, so.
Very good. Thank you so much. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President and Board. The 2.5 GPA that we changed years ago is absolutely paying off. It is absolutely paying off in ways that people don't even know. We actually have 10 seniors that have received offers, and we have 6 juniors that people are kind of itching for. And you have to look at the price tag of each one of those. It's about $100,000 per kid. So the payoff of raising the GPA and making it comparable to the ACT is absolutely perfect because kids are rising to the occasion. I know, Dr. Johnson, you mentioned it earlier. You were at the State House and hearing Ms. Miranda call out so many young people that have a 3.5 and higher because they've exceeded the 2.5 that we talk about. And when we talk to other superintendents and people in the region about what the expectations are for people to participate in athletics, they're just shocked, like, you raised it that high without the community storming the gates. And so that's a testament to our coaches and our teachers and administrators and everybody else. So, and then the second part of my comment, we have created a fun committee. And I'm going to have Ms. Wilson come up and talk about the opportunities for the fun committee that you guys are going to be invited to an event on the 16th, so. That is it. Yes.
Fun is my middle name, so. No, I'm just kidding. Well, yes, the superintendent is hosting a, are we calling it a holiday luncheon for staff members that, who don't have children directly in front of them at that time. And it's going to be at the intermediate school. And Laura Wilkie and Jeanette Jordan have done some planning on it, as well as the HR team, Shonda Ferguson-Gordon, Sherri Chambers, Mary Peter, and myself. So you're in for a treat. We're creating a winter wonderland for you all, so we're excited. And we'll have a nice lunch. I don't have the time right in front of me. I wasn't.
11:30.
11:30. And there will be, do you want me to tell them who's providing the lunch, or is it a surprise?
That is a surprise.
Okay, there's a surprise.
Because I'm just cooking so much at night. I just can't keep up with it.
But we hope everyone that's able to come will come. We wish we could invite everyone. But unfortunately, because we still have to work that day, we can't invite the whole district. But you all are invited, as is the executive team and some other people that we think can still, a little bit of time at lunchtime, to come over and just celebrate the end of fall.
Right. And finally, Ms. Hobbs has taken us to a whole tech level. I mean, it's just tech endorsement. So we were going to do a gift exchange where you just come and you take a name out of the basket, and she told me I was boring. And she even mentioned in one of our meetings, even I could do it. Do you remember that, Ms. Denny? Yeah, she said that. So I do have her lump of coal ready. It's still hot.
As long as it turns to a diamond. Are you mad about that?
But Ms. Hobbs actually created this thing, this app, where with the secret kind of Santa thing, you actually do it technology-wise, and you pick the person. You actually have a list of things that they may like, and so you can choose from that based on their age, based on their sex, based on their interests. And so we've taken this exchange thing to a whole new level, so thank you.
Just a point of clarification. You said the intermediate school. That's at the 825 Waycross location?
Yeah, and if you're coming and want to do the gift exchange, you do have to sign up, I guarantee. And come with a gift, because that's part of the fun. And there's an email in your inbox that you haven't seen already that it is, it is for Ms. Hobbs because I was able to do it at this point. You literally click on it, you say if you're coming, you pick, it gives you a secret, I call it a secret Santa, but a secret person to shop for. And then you can also tell the system what you want. Hopefully, the person that draws your name will look at it instead of getting something that you're kind of like, yeah. You can, you'll actually be pleasantly surprised.
Wonderful.
And she failed to mention, if you, if for some reason you can't make it, that's fine. Get that gift in there. And there are other names other than Mr. Smith, right?
Is that the program?
Okay, all right. Is there anything else, Mr. Smith?
No, we do have a need for executive session that should last about five minutes.
Okay. I just want to say one thing with regards to, I've heard Mrs. Kuhn mention adversity. And I would not, you know, like this day to end without saying one of my mama's sayings. So, but one thing she did always say is that when you're facing adversity, to stop and adapt and then overcome. You know, because she would say the only place that success came before work is in the dictionary. So if you want to work, you got to work to get successful. So I'm just saying, you know, we are praising our football team, but success is contagious, people. It is contagious. People like to be around successful things. So as we succeed, and I am a testament to that because my family was so much smarter than me, I always thought. But anyway, my point is, they were successful, so I wanted to be successful, okay? So I do really believe about the whole thing about the team facing adversity. There's always someone that's making, you know, a statement or whatever about our district. But you know what? The other thing she used to say is, we can show them better than we can tell them. So let's just show them, okay? Let's do it. We're going to do it. I feel it.
I love it.
I'm feeling it. All right. So there's gifts going on, so. Ah, so nice. Very good, very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, now you're official. Yeah.
So Mr. McGowan, if you got Dr. Culetti's shirt, don't even try it. Just turn it over.
He's going to miss you, Gino. He is going to miss you, Gino.
We'll just come back every now and then for some of that.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
You know that's all Ms. Jordan, right?
And we do appreciate all the work that these two have done for us over the past years. And we can't say thank you enough. This is, you know, a labor of love, honestly. It really is. It's a labor of love.
I'd also like to thank the board publicly for sending flowers to my home, for my wife. Thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We do want to say we appreciate all of the mentors and volunteers that we have and to all of the teachers and staff for everything that they have done all year. And we appreciate that. So Board, there is a need going into the next item on the agenda, 1401, motion to move into executive session.
One other comment, Dr. Johnson, I'm sorry. At the January board meeting, you will not see Dr. Martin, Dr. Raglin, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Hobbs, Mrs. Denny, and Mr. Denny. They will be at a conference, learning more about AR and how to really give kids other services. What we did, we found a conference that had all of the things packed into one instead of having many conferences. So they will be traveling, and you will be left in a good position. It will be me and Mrs. Bray that will be taking on all of the services for the team. But they will come back and give you a full litany of all the things that they've learned at the conference. So the next meeting, I don't want the new board to wonder where is the team, okay?
All right, very good. All right. So Board, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session at this time.
Madam President, I will make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose to consider the discipline and/or dismissal of a public employee.
I'll second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Burdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. There will be no further action. We will go into closed session. There'll be no further action after the executive session. Therefore, we sincerely thank the Waycross community for videotaping tonight's service, or meeting. And with that said, we'll call the Witten Woods City School Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, December the 13th, 2021, adjourned. Thank you. Take care of yourself. Have a great evening and a happy holiday.